We're going to go ahead and get started here with today's meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Thanks to everyone for joining us today. I do have three of my colleagues with me here on the dais, and then as well, we have Supervisor Chukri on the line as well. So, thank you for joining us via phone, Supervisor Chukri.
Okay. Thanks.
So, with that, we're going to go ahead and start this meeting like we start all meetings of the Board of Supervisors, with prayer and the pledge. And our clerk of the board, Fran McCarroll, is going to lead us today. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Thank you, Lord, for the freedom we have in America to assemble together. With mindfulness of this freedom, let us remember all those who fought for and secured those freedoms we enjoy in these United States. And when we see the beauty of this new springtime, let us remember to praise you for all the works of your mighty hand. Lord, as the supervisors consider the matters before them today, we ask you for the blessing of wisdom to rest upon them. And for all of the employees of Maricopa County, that we will serve with kindness, we will truly listen to the concerns of those we serve, we will seek to meet their needs, and we will serve each one without discrimination but with a spirit of inclusion. For these things and for your mighty blessings, we give you thanks. Amen. And now if you'd join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our clerk was asked to do the prayer and the pledge today by Supervisor Chukri, isn't that right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank our clerk for being so hospitable and leading us today in the prayer and pledge. So, thank you, Fran.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So, at this time, now that you're done with the prayer and the pledge, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Chukri?
Present.
Supervisor Sellers?
Here.
Supervisor Hickman?
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Here.
And Chairman Gates?
Here. All right. Well, excited today to be joined by Jose Santiago from Animal Care and Control and his friend. And by the way, I clearly did not, none of us here on the dais got the memo on the attire today, so we...
It is spring, so we all need to be in spring colors, and I decided that she was one of them that needed to be in spring colors today. This little girl right here, her name is Poppy, and I did name her this morning, so that name can be changed. But she is about eight years old, so she's a senior gal at the shelter, but the senior gals can still have fun and have a lot of love to give to someone. Because she's a senior gal, she has a reduced adoption rate, so her adoption rate would be about $25, and she would have everything covered. I also want to take an opportunity to say that we are still doing what we can to manage space within the shelter, but I want to take a moment to acknowledge our alternative placement team. Since January, they have placed nearly 1,000 animals in other shelters across the country. I believe the number as of this morning was about 790, so without their help, we would be in a much more severe state as we speak at the shelter. So, we're appreciative of them, and we're appreciative of everyone who comes out and adopts.
Well, thank you so much, and Poppy, is that what you said? Poppy is very well behaved, so...
Very, and she has the ears for this hat, not very many dogs can pull this off, so...
That's right. Well, thank you so much, and as always, Jose, thanks to you and the whole team for all that you do for our pets in Maricopa County. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes at all, announcements or corrections to the agenda today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page 18 of your agenda, item number 34, regarding the Vulture Mountain Recreation Area, the very last line, which actually comes out on page 20, indicates this is in Supervisory District 5, and that should be a correction to District 4.
Came on you. Mr. Gallardo for trying to steal Vulture Mountain.
Nice try. And, Mr. Chairman, also on page 9 of your agenda, this will require a vote when you get there, but I understand that item number 11, the road file declarations, will need to be continued to your April 10 meeting, just because of a publication issue, so we're correcting that. So, when you get there, we'll just need to have a vote to continue those items to the 410 meeting.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you for those updates and corrections, especially the vitally important one on where Vulture Mountain is. Now that we've got that straight, we can move on to a couple of proclamations we have. And again, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Clerk.
You've got me busy this morning, don't you?
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the first proclamation is the National County Government Month, April 2019. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 300 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities; and whereas counties provide health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, among other services; and whereas Maricopa County and all Arizona counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways; and whereas this year's National Association of Counties theme of connecting the unconnected aligns with Chairman Bill Gates' strategic priority to create a smart government that promotes the growth of a technologically advanced region, now therefore be it resolved that the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim April 2019 as National County Government Month.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for that, and it is very timely. I had the opportunity to go back to the NACO Conference a couple weeks ago in DC, and just a great reminder of what a wonderful job we do here in Maricopa County, everybody, all 13,000 employees and the team here that is strong, and I'll put this team up against any county in this country. So, thank you, and with that, any comments or we would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, it'd be my honor to make the motion. I started off my career right here in Maricopa County in the Recorder's Office, and as a county employee, I've never recredited one bit. My experience here in Maricopa County has always been pleasant. I spent 14 years here, and I made a bad decision by leaving here and going to the legislature, but nonetheless, it's been a pleasant 14 years. I know how hard many of our employees work every day. They sacrifice so much to provide critical services to our community and to our citizens, so it'd be my honor to be able to move the proclamation forward on the National County Government Month proclamation. So, I move that we approve our proclamation in front of us.
Well, thank you for that motion, and we're all grateful that you came back to Maricopa County. So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be very proud to second that motion.
Thank you. Supervisor Hickman, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions or comments? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes unanimously, and you did such a great job, Madam Clerk, that would you be willing to read another proclamation for us?
I certainly would, sir.
Thank you.
This proclamation is National Service Recognition, April 2, 2019. Whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service was established to connect Americans of all ages and backgrounds with opportunities to give back to their communities; and whereas national service includes AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps, whose members address many pressing challenges facing our communities, including responding to natural disasters, supporting veterans and military families, and fighting the opioid epidemic; and whereas national service expands economic opportunities by providing education, career skills, and leadership training for those who serve; and whereas the national service participants of all ages serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering local civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations; and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service is joining with the National Association of Counties and county executives across the country to recognize these volunteers who provide health, education, and support services, now therefore be it resolved that the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize national service participants and proclaims April 2, 2019 as National Service Recognition Day.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Do we have any comments or a motion on this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be proud to make the motion to accept proclamation of National Service Recognition Day.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I will second it. We have literally just hundreds of thousands of organizations and people, just slew of folks, just doing wonderful stuff out there in our community, and I see it firsthand, I know we all do, see it firsthand, and so it would be an honor to second this motion.
Well, thank you very much, Supervisor Gallardo, and especially, you know, over the past 10 years or so, as we've, you know, went through this great recession and tried to, tried to come back, you know, these service organizations really came in and filled the void, non-profiting government and providing such important services, so I think it's great that we're recognizing them with this proclamation. Any other comments? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. All right. So, from time to time, we do take items out of order, and we're going to do that now and move up a very special item we have today on our agenda, item 34, which is a lease with the United States Department of Interior Bureau of Land Management. And I believe we have a Rem Hawes with us today from BLM, who, would you like to come and say a few words? First of all, welcome.
Thank you, yes, please.
Yes, well, please come join us at the lectern. Thank you for being here today.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, and members of the board, my name is Rem Hawes. I am the Public Affairs Lead for the U.S. Bureau of Land Management in Arizona. Until about three weeks ago, I was also the field manager for the Hacioma Field Office, which manages the million or so acres of public land north and west of Phoenix, including the Vulture Mountains. So, it's a double pleasure for me to be here today. To begin with, I wanted to introduce several folks from the Bureau of Land Management who were also here today. First of all is Ron Tipton. He is the acting Hacioma Field Manager. And Leon Thomas, he is the Phoenix District Manager, our big boss. And Mariela Castaneda, who is our Public Affairs Specialist.
Well, welcome to all of you.
So, just briefly, I wanted to mention that this is, this is, in some ways, the end of a very long process, but the exciting part is it's the beginning of something big. And just on a personal note, I remember, I believe it was seven years ago, one of my first meetings when I became the field manager in the Phoenix District was with R.J. Carden and his staff, and it was to discuss this very project, which was already in motion. But we really picked it up at that point and made some headway, and it's been a, it's a complicated process. We've all exhibited a lot of patience to get here, but this is really a momentous moment that we're getting ready to undertake when we all get together and sign this lease, making this area under the management of the Maricopa County Parks and Recreation Department. The Bureau of Land Management manages 245 million acres of public lands in the United States. That's literally one-eighth of the United States. It's a lot. In Arizona, we manage 12 million acres of public land, and since 1976, that's when the Federal Land Policy and Management Act was passed, which directed the BLM to, in general, retain public lands for management by the Bureau of Land Management. And so, we have done so since that time. We have a few mechanisms to make land tenure adjustments, and in this case, to grant lands to a public entity or a nonprofit entity. It has to be a really good reason to do that, to change the ownership of federal public lands managed by the BLM, and I think this Vulture Mountains Recreation Area is exactly one of those. This is, it has to be in the public interest, certainly this is, and I think that the conveyance of this 1,046 acres of public lands to be managed under a lease by the Maricopa County Parks and Recreation Department serves a public need, a community need, in not only Maricopa County, particularly in the outskirts of Phoenix and the Wickenburg community. But I think what's really nice and interesting about this particular conveyance is we're not washing our hands of these lands, handing it to the county and walking away, nor is the county wanting to do that. What this is, is 1,046 acres that the county will be able to manage as a recreation facility under the park system, but it allows for a footprint of cooperative management in the overall Vulture Mountains area surrounding Wickenburg, which is a very large area of 70,000 acres or so of public lands, which are popular for recreation and other uses. But I think this is the, this is the foundation for a partnership in order to not only manage the park facilities on these 1,046 acres, but in partnership to be able to manage recreation across a much larger area. So, we, as the Bureau of Land Management, are very excited about this, what we see as a partnership, not simply a lease or a change of land ownership, but truly a partnership. So, with that, I'd like to say thank you, let you know that this is a real honor to be here. We're very excited about completing this transaction, as I undoubtedly think you are. We look forward to your consideration and vote on this, and hopefully being able to sign a Recreation and Public Purposes Act lease today. So, thank you very much.
Well, please. Mr. Hawes, I know some of my colleagues will have some comments here, but just on behalf of all of Maricopa County, just want to thank you for this partnership. I know that a lot of people worked very hard on this, and, but this wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for your partnership, and I do want to recognize R.J. Carden and the Parks Team, an incredible effort, and we do actually have some of our members of the Parks Board here, so these are members of the community who serve on the Parks Board. Thank you for your service and for being a part of this, but this would not have been successful, would not have gotten into the end zone if it wasn't for the efforts of Supervisor Gallardo. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, it's not in your district. I'm sorry.
Do that again?
Of course, of Supervisor Hickman, who does such a wonderful job representing this area as well. Want to recognize Scott Eishem and all the great work that he did alongside Supervisor Hickman on this. So, with that, maybe if I can turn it over to Supervisor Hickman for some comments.
Well, Rem, thank you for being here and stating what's kind of going on so eloquently, especially when it comes to the federal viewpoint on the husbandry of lands and the absolute gem that is the Vulture Mountains, so much history, and just really happy that you're here to talk about it. And Leon, you know, I always thought BLM was kind of a hands-off, hey, they're out there somewhere, that's a lot of land, but we don't, we don't get to see the face of BLM, so it's great to see you guys, but it's, but that's actually not true. I mean, you guys are here today, Leon, working with you on other issues that you've been straightforward. I can tell that you're a local kid, just like me. You've thrown yourself at this job, and you've been there and present, and if there's problems on BLM land, it's like you're the first guy that calls and starts working through them. So, it really helps on that interface between federal, state, and county to have people like you, like you guys, doing the jobs that you do for the community, and it's great to get, to see the public face of BLM out here today. Before, you know, you asked for the vote, this is kind of a business thing. I mean, this is, this has been a long time coming. It predates, it predates me. It was one of the first things I started to work on, or at least hearing about. My Wickenburg people that got stuck in traffic, welcome to the great state of Maricopa County that you've gone, come in here a little bit further. Julie was kind of talking to me through text, trying to get down here, so you can see the traffic and the logistical things that we, as a board, are trying to work through. So, thank you for being here. But if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, could I have R.J. come up? Because we, we get to look out on this dais, and we have a small agenda today, so I, hopefully we can take a little bit more time.
You bet.
We look out there, and we thank you guys all the time, but we hardly ever give a chance to talk about the nuts and bolts of what you guys do for us and the county parks, and two of the ladies that beat me up the mountain on that hiking that day are here. So, can you kind of tell us where we're at, what this means, and brag on your staff a little bit?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, thank you so much. It's been a long time in coming. This has been a little over nine years ago that we started the master planning for the Vulture Mountain Recreation Area, and as you mentioned, former Supervisor Max Wilson spearheaded that meeting. He was, he chaired that meeting in the town of Wickenburg. And so, it was really a concept, and I have to thank a couple of folks that are here today with the Wickenburg Conservation Foundation, because 11 years ago, they were in my office saying, "We need a county park in Wickenburg." And so, Bernadine and Penny are here behind me, so thank you, and thank you to all the Wickenburg Conservation Foundation folks, but they really spearheaded this, and I really put it back on them, and also Julie Brooks is here, the Chamber Director for the Chamber of Wickenburg, and I believe Vice Mayor Royce is here. Thank you for being here. And I really, I put it on them. I said, you know, "We have 120,000 acres of parkland in Maricopa County. If this is something that's important to the community of Wickenburg, we're here to partner with you on that, but you have to help us lead that fight." And they jumped in wholeheartedly and have pushed us, quite frankly, have rallied the folks of Wickenburg, they've worked with BLM. Again, I want to thank BLM and Rem and some of the folks even before Rem, they've been wonderful to work with on this process, but it has been truly a collaborative effort. We've had dozens of meetings in the town of Wickenburg, some here in Phoenix, to make sure that we got other Maricopa County residents involved. You mentioned staff, and I wanted to point out Jennifer Waller, who is a little, not moving so well today, but she has been with me along this journey the entire way, so thank you, Jennifer, you've done a great job. Ken Von DeShir, our Planning and Development Manager, and he's been significant in making this happen, as well as Jennifer Johnston, who has been just fabulous. She's out at the Hacioma River Preserve every other day. Another byproduct of this wonderful project as well, Mr. Supervisor Hickman, is, you know, we just met with the Nature Conservancy because they were next to the Hacioma River Preserve and said, "We want to be good neighbors with you, so we want you involved in this planning process." And about a year into that, they came to us, and I believe you at the time, and said, "We are really impressed with the way Maricopa County manages its natural resources. We'd like to give you this property." And so, we thought about that, and just what another jewel in our crown of Maricopa County. So, I also quickly, because it's National Service Day, I want to honor Bob Rhodes, who is a, or Tom Rhodes, excuse me, who's the chairman of our Parks and Recreation Commission. We have Bob Branch, excuse me, who's District 4 Commissioner, thank you, and then Eric Mears, who's also on our Parks and Recreation Commission. And I have to thank our Parks and Recreation Commission, they have been such a huge part of this all the way through. So, Mr. Chairman, without taking too much more time, finally, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors, because the Board has always... to thank the Board of Supervisors, because the Board has always been behind this project. You've seen what the town of Wickenburg has said they need. You've seen the needs of Maricopa County, and I'm just excited that over the next four to five years, we can now really start to develop this, along with Maricopa County Department of Transportation. So Jennifer, thank you very much. McDott has been a huge player in this effort and will continue. So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you very much, R.J. Any questions for R.J. or his team?
I don't have any questions after seven years.
It's too late.
Yeah, and once again, and I did want to point out our citizens' involvement. Maricopa County Parks is known around the nation as just the class act of county park systems and a true leader. And it all becomes, because our Parks Commission make our job easy. You guys take the time, vet this out, financially you vet it out, and just figure out if these types of lands and these types of systems are going to be a good fit for our county, then we get to take them in, we put some money towards facilities, based on the fees, the fee schedule that you set, and we approve. And it's fantastic. It's just, it's one of my pride and joys of being able to work with this commission when we talk about it, because I know these parks are going to outlast us on the Board, and they're going to be there for the next ladies or gentlemen that come and take our spaces. And we all get to talk just about fantastic things that happen in our parks. So thank you, Bob. Adele, great seeing you, too. Thanks for driving Bob down here. He needs the help. Royce, I'm going to, please go up and tell the mayor. We'll give him a slight bit of credit, but I'm going to give you a lot of credit. You've been there for many years guiding this, and especially the Conservation Foundation that started this stuff up. How can we protect Wickenburg, and what can we do for our citizens to offer them amenities and have them pridefully living way out there? But it seems to be getting closer every year, doesn't it? So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move forward or approve item number 34, a lease with the United States Department of Interior Bureau of Land Management.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Hickman, for that motion, and thank you for your leadership on this. This is a great day for Maricopa County and a great day for District Four. So we have a motion, and a second.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'd like to make a second and a comment.
Please.
As a part of the State Transportation Board, I have visited Wickenburg for the last five years. And I think this is really, really an important thing that's happening today because of the phenomenal growth that's going on in Wickenburg, and impressive growth. So congratulations.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Good job, R.J.
Good job, R.J.
Mr. Chairman.
I apologize.
No, please, Supervisor Chukri.
I did not want to preempt Mr. Guyardo, because I always do that. But I do want to echo my colleague, Mr. Sellers', comments, and give kudos to Mr. Hickman, as well as his predecessor, who really saw this through. And I think this is, when we talk about Maricopa County and what a special place it is, I think this item is really a way of trumpeting that and how we see things for the future of future residents, and as Mr. Hickman eloquently said, our successor someday. So I'm very excited about this. I'm a little disappointed that Clint was only able to negotiate 1,000 acres, just over 1,000 acres, out of the full lot. But we can do better, Clint. Come on now.
We'll work on getting more, Steve.
Okay, all right.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you, everyone, for these comments, and thanks to everyone for their hard work. It's, you know, projects like this that go on for years, it'd be easy to say, you know, "It's just too hard to do, takes too long," and everyone's sticking to it to have something like Supervisor Hickman said, that will outlast all of us and be something great for generations to enjoy. So we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Good job. Thank you, guys. Mr. Chairman, I'm hoping that you would oblige me by signing the documentation in front of the cameras to put this down in cement, and if you could invite people that you deem appropriate for the picture or pictures that could be taken.
Absolutely, absolutely. I would be happy to do that. Would love to have my colleagues join me down there. And those folks who participated in this, come up and join us, and you can all file in behind us and have one big happy family.
Great, thank you.
It was more exciting when we thought it was a lot.
Yeah.
Well, you can stand in the middle. I'll stand behind you.
Good job, ladies.
This is out of the way.
Excuse me.
How are you doing here?
Thank you so much for your service. Great to see you.
Maybe when we stand up on the stand out here.
That's all right.
Everyone get a picture.
Is that yours?
No.
Oh.
The chair wants to give a pen.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, you have budget cuts.
I want to be in the senior team.
I apologize.
Like everything important, you have to do it trickly.
Not trying to do names.
All right, and with that, it is official.
All right, and I will get some pictures before everyone takes off. We got to get them, please.
Join us here?
Who's the driver?
You want to come up for the vote?
Yeah, please.
Vice Mayor, thank you so much for joining us. Thank you for your leadership on this. Fraser Hickman?
Right, standing right in my eye.
All right, excellent.
Come on over here.
Yes, sir.
Meet you at Nada's for pie.
Good to see you. I was so happy when you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
but if you need to leave, our feelings will not be hurt.
Very good.
I'll see you again in November.
Thanks so much. All right, well, where do we go from that? That was good stuff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was fun. I'm not, we had a signing, I don't know if we've had a signing ceremony like that before. I could be wrong. Steve Chukri is the old man on the Board. Maybe he'll remind, don't remember that. Steve, did you have a signing ceremony?
Not that I recall. Not that I recall. I don't think we have. That's a good catch. Well, congratulations.
Awesome.
All right. Thanks so much. All right, so now we'll move back into our regular order with the statutory hearings for Clerk of the Board. We have seven liquor license applications, temporary extension of premises patio for Bartlett Lake Grill LLC, eight petitions hearing for the formation of the proposed Hacienda Granada Irrigation Water Delivery District, nine is petition hearings for the formation of the proposed Ventura Manor Irrigation Water Delivery District, and 10, these are road deannexations from the city of Buckeye to Maricopa County. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips here on items seven through 10?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, on item number eight, Mr. Joseph Slezak is here. If there are any questions, he is in favor of this item, which is number eight.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for joining us. Do any of my colleagues have questions for him? Any other speaker slips?
And then, Mr. Chairman, three on item number nine, which is the Ventura Manor Water Delivery District. Sam Kelso, excuse me, Sam Kelso is here in favor and would like to address the Board. Also Ted Kercher, and Tom Kautz. I hope I've pronounced those correctly. All three are in favor and would like to take just a moment to address the Board on the Ventura Manor item.
Wonderful. Thank you for being here. Whoever would like to come on down first, please join us.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I am Sam Kelso. I live at 4030 East Montevista, which is in the middle of Ventura Manor. All of us live in Ventura Manor. We're all in favor of the proposed water delivery district, and I'd like to give you a little bit of history and tell you why. This land was first patented in 1897. To you as supervisors, that means it went on the tax rolls. In the early 1900s, before 1920, irrigation water was first delivered to the property, and it was farmed from then until 1946, when it was subdivided into Ventura Manor. Ventura Manor was subdivided by a company named Ventura Engineering. I know nothing about that, but I thought it was an interesting factoid. My next-door neighbor built her house there at the end of World War II while her husband was in the South Pacific. They've long since passed away, but many families have stuck throughout the years. We have two and three-generation families that own two homes in the subdivision. So it's a place that people like to live, and new people come to, but there's never a for-sale sign up. When I bought in there 50 years ago, there was no for-sale sign. I met a Realtor, and he said, "I know exactly the place for you, but I have to go talk the people into letting go of it so that you can buy it." And he did. And actually, they moved in with their mother-in-law while they were building their new house. But that's how desirable it is to live in this neighborhood, and it's because of the flood irrigation and the mature landscape and the trees that are predominant in central Phoenix but are starting to go away because of failures of the irrigation systems. Our system, part of the piping, is 80 years old. My part is on a ditch, so you can repair it with a shovel. You don't have to have a backhoe or any heavy-duty work to do it. But we have two major street crossings, which we understand if one collapses, we're looking at $30,000. We have four and $500 repairs with some regularity. We have a little difficulty collecting on those. Wines up, most of us that do the work pay for it, and the others get a free ride. This is a way to spread that load and give us the ability to keep it irrigated for the next 100 years. The system maintenance is working. The system works fairly well. We'll have money by forming this district and the authority to get more money to make repairs. And it'll be community involvement. Just getting the petitions was community involvement. The three of us called on every single neighbor, many of whom we didn't find at home, but those that we did find, we mostly got a good reception. So the neighborhood is prime for this at this time, and we'd like to ask you to form the district today. We'll improve the service, and then there won't be any questions also about who paid what, because it's going to come out of their tax bill, and we're going to have to go to the county treasurer to get paid. So thank you very much for listening to me. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelso. Any questions from my colleagues? This is in my district in District Three, so we appreciate you coming and all the work that you put into this. It is a wonderful area, and this is a part in keeping it wonderful.
Thank you.
Into the future. Now, we did have a couple other speaker slips. Did anyone else want to come and speak or supplement Mr. Kelso's comments, please?
Good morning. My name is Ted Kercher. I live at 4119 East Montevista. I'm one of those second-generation families. We moved there 35 years ago, and then our son, he was living in Tempe later on, after he went off to ASU and stuff. And then eventually he started looking for a home, and he was looking for something close to work in Tempe. But one day he came by, and he mentioned the house that Sam mentioned next door to Sam. And he said, "Oh, the gardener's house is up for sale." So he immediately bought that house. So my son lives down the street, the grandkids do. That's nice to have. And the neighborhood is like that. And when we moved there 35 years ago, we told the people that were helping us look for a place to live, we wanted a deep irrigated lot with big mature trees and stuff, because that's where we were coming from. And so that's what we found, and we're happy as clams where we are, and everybody I know around us, know everybody on the block. And it's very good. So thank you very much for helping us form this. I've been part of the team to collect the money, which is difficult at times, but we've done well, and we're going to do better now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kercher. Appreciate you coming down.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman, my name is Tom Kautz. I live at 4128 East Palm Lane. I've lived in that neighborhood for 41 years, moved strictly to that neighborhood because of irrigation. Was 400 Dean when I lived in Phoenix since 57, 56, and I always wanted to live there. We're forming this for the fear of those underground lines going underneath the streets. A $30,000 bill is just too much for anyone to handle. Our intent is to collect 80 bucks per acre. We figured I might get, what, 4,500 or so a year? After five or six years, we'll have a kitty big enough to sustain that hit. And then the intent is to back that $80 assessment down to $5 or something. So it's strictly in order to keep something that's a gem going. That's the entire focus on it.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your remarks. And again, thanks for all your work on this as a community. Really, really inspiring to see when people come together like this. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve. And actually, this is, I'm sorry, did you?
Is this for both?
So this, so, yes, so my apologies. So are you here to speak on, you're here to speak on?
Hacienda Granada.
On eight, okay, yes. My apologies. Please.
They beat me to the.
Yes, my apologies. And your name again for the record?
Joseph Slezak.
Okay, welcome.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, Council, neighbors, thank you for being here and listening. I've lived in the Hacienda Granada neighborhood at 4219 East Coolidge for 23 years. My wife has lived in the Hacienda Granada neighborhood for 41 years. the streets. A $30,000 bill is just too much for anyone to handle. Our intent is to collect 80 bucks per acre. We figured I might get, what, 4,500 or so a year? After five or six years, we'll have a kitty big enough to sustain that hit. And then, the intent is to back that $80 assessment down to $5 or something. So, it's strictly in order to keep something that's a gem going. That's the entire focus on it.
Excellent. Well, thank, thank you for your remarks, and again, thanks for all your work on this as, as a community. Really, really inspiring to see when people come together like this. Any, any questions or comments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve. And, and actually, this is, I'm sorry, did you?
Is this for both?
So, this, so, yes, so, so my apologies. So, are you here to speak on, you're here to speak on, on?
Hacienda Granada.
On eight. Okay, yes, my apologies. Please.
They beat me to the.
Yes, my, my apologies. And, and your name again for the record?
Joseph Slezak.
Okay, welcome.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, Council, neighbors, thank you for being here and listening. I've lived in the Hacienda Granada neighborhood at 4219 East Coolidge for 23 years. My wife has lived in the Hacienda Granada neighborhood for 41 years, which probably explains why I'm up here. We would like to form a district to preserve the history and maintain our irrigation pipes. It's a wonderful property or neighborhood with large trees, mature trees, and it's the reason why people move into the neighborhood. So, thank you for your consideration, and just wanted to, to mention that.
Well, thank, no, thank you, Mr. Slezak. Thanks for your work and, and for joining us today. So, with that, did we have anyone else who wanted to speak on these items? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve all of these unless anyone would like any particular one pulled out separately.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of items number seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Gentlemen, thanks for coming down and joining us today. Next, we'll move on to our statutory hearings under transportation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the item 11A through E to the 410 meeting.
Excellent. Thank you for that motion, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion to continue to the April 10 meeting and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. And now, we move on to additional statutory hearings under Transportation 12 through 15. These are patent easement abandonments for road file number PAB 0069, 0079, 0092, and 0057. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone here present to speak on these items?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Jared Moline is here, and he will speak if necessary on item number 15. I believe that that particular one involves his property. Are there any questions?
All right. Any, any questions from my colleagues?
That was, that was speak if, approval?
He's in favor. And speak if necessary.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for approval of items 12 through 15.
We have a motion. Thank you for that, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, we, under the sheriff, we have 16, which is a donation from the Friends of Phoenix Public Library, 17, one-time additions to fleet of speed data collection trailers, 18 is an IGA with the City of Phoenix for ICAC, and 19 is a modification to the operating and financial plan with the U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service up in the Tonto National Forest. And then, under the treasurer, we have number 20, which is clearing uncollectible tax. Do I have a motion with respect to items 16 through 20?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of items number 16 through 20.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers, for the second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, we've got a treasurer's item 21, which is an officer on, offer on tax-deeded land parcel near Sausman Road and Baseline Road. The Board will consider this item. I think we've got a couple offers on it, but would entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to accept offer number two in the amount of $200.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri, for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Hickman, for that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you very much, Supervisor Chukri, for getting the county top dollar on that one.
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman. All going to technology.
All right. Moving on, county departments under emergency management, number 22. We've got an IGA with Maricopa County Community College District. Under finance, 23 is funds, transfers, and warrants. And under human resources, number 24 is market ranges. The Board will now consider items 22 through 24.
Move to approve items 22 through 24, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Those items pass unanimously. Next, we move into human services. 25 grant funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. 26 is in agreement with ARM of Save the Family Foundation of Arizona and the City of Chandler. 27 is amend the lease agreement with the town of Guadalupe. 28 and 29 are grant funds for Early Head Start Child Care Partnership Program and Head Start, Early Head Start Program, and 30 is a fair housing proclamation. The Board will now consider items 25 through 30.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 25 through 30. I'd like to make a comment on item 26. Item 26 is specifically for the benefit of a family in Chandler, so I'd like to thank the Human Services Director Bruce Liggett and the City of Chandler, and especially the Save the Family Foundation of Arizona for making this happen.
Excellent. Thank you for that motion and those comments. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move under the medical examiner. We have item 31, which is a letter of agreement with the University of Arizona College of Medicine. 32 is an IGA with Arizona State University, and 33 is budget appropriation adjustment. Under procurement, 35 is a change order with Gould Evans Architects. 36 is a MOU with Cone Inc., and 37 is a contract with Lincoln Constructors, Inc. Board will now consider items 31 through 33 and 35 through 37, because we already handled item 31, or 34 with much fanfare earlier.
Move to approve items 31 through 37, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Holding out number 34.
Holding out number 34.
Thank you. We have a motion from Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second? I think we had a second from Supervisor Chukri. Thank you for that. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go under public health. 38 is an agreement with New Mexico State University, and 39 is license agreement with the city of Avondale. Under real estate, we've got 40, which is the IGA with Gila County, and 41 is communications license agreement with Verizon Wireless. The Board will now consider items 38 through 41.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of items 38 through 41.
Thank you for that motion, Supervisor Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now, we move on to a number 42, which is an IGA with Gila County, and this item actually requires a unanimous vote, but would entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number 42.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. I think we need to, we might have to play the tape, but I'll, I'll give it to you. I'll give it to you, Supervisor Sellers. Thank you for that second. So, we do have a motion and a second, and if the clerk could please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Chukri?
Aye.
Supervisor Sellers?
Yes.
Supervisor Hickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
And Chairman Gates.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that MASH motion passes unanimously, and now we'll move on to transportation, 43 through 46. We've got IGAs with City of Chandler, Town of Gilbert, and Flood Control District. 47 is traffic signal installation and maintenance easement. 48 is renewal of right-of-way grant with the Bureau of Land Management, our friends at the Bureau of Land Management. 49 through 55, new and change in traffic controls. 56 is easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. And under Board of Supervisors, number 57 is reappointment to the Maricopa County Building Code Advisory Board, and we thank all those who are, are willing to continue to serve in those roles. So, with that, the Board will consider items 43 through 57.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of items 43 through 57.
Thank you for that motion, Supervisor Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Supervisor Gallardo. Any comments on those items? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously as well. Now, we move to the setting of hearings. Under Clerk of the Board, 58 is a proposed Evergreen Irrigation Water Delivery District impact statement. Under planning and development, we have 59 planning and zoning cases. Under transportation, we have 60, which is road file number 5932, and then 61 is patent easement abandonment road file number PAB 0085. The Board will now consider items 58 through 61.
Motion to approve items 58 through 61, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that motion, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Supervisor Sellers. All in favor of those items, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now, we go on to the consent agenda. 62, civil penalty appeals. 63, property reclassification appeals for approval. 64, property valuation notices. 65, donations. 66 and 67, duplicate and stale dated warrants. 68, Head Start monthly report, and 69, precinct commitment. The Board will now consider items 62 through 69.
Motion to approve items 62 through 69.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Also on the consent agenda, 70, secured and unsecured tax rule corrections. 71, tax cases. 72, tax abatements. 73, treasures, collections, and investment summary report. Board will now consider items 70 through 73.
Move to approve items 70 through 73, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman, and thank you, Supervisor Chukri, for the second. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, on the addendum, under the sheriff, we have A1, which is amend, rescind action, and adopt MOU with the Board of Supervisors. And just as a little bit of background here, we did address this MOU previously within the past few weeks, and there was a change in the construction approach that the sheriff is going to take on this, and so that's why this is being brought. But we're rescinding that prior action, and now the Board is being asked to consider this amended MOU, which addresses the MASH, MASH building to, for the sheriff to perform that function. So, with that background, would open it up to any comments or a motion from my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple things. One, I appreciate the sheriff's attempt to deal with the MASH unit, and, and I, and I think we can do a lot in terms of helping them in there. I'm not going to support this motion at this time. I know I supported it previously. I think, you know, after thinking about it for a few weeks, I think there's better ways for us to deal with it. It has none to do with the sheriff and his attempts and, and all that. I support what the sheriff is trying to do here. I just think there's better ways for us to do this, and I would hope that we would readdress it in another way. But at this point, I cannot support the motion.
All right. Any other comments, or do we have a motion that someone would be willing to put forward at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I also want to just make my thoughts known about this. I, I can't support the motion either, just based on consistency. I do believe that this going towards the CEMAR approach will be better for the county and the sheriff's department if so, if so desired, and if this, if this moves forward. But, again, based on my previous statements where I talked about moving further and further away from, I believe, what the mandates are in this, on this subject matter to us as, well, I don't, I don't want to beat a, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I just think there's other ways to look at this, at this item that the sheriff's department has about the care and comfort of, of animals that are for you, being held for evidentiary purposes. I would implore again that the sheriff's department take a look at how we care and house our animals in the Animal Care and Control Division. We've put money, more money towards that over the last couple years. I believe strongly that Mary Martin is doing a good job in that area, and I believe that the sheriff's department should at least kind of track, track down to see what other municipalities are doing with this, with this subject. So, for that, if a motion comes forward, I, I won't be able to support it either.
Thank you for those comments. Just, you know, for the, for the record, just so everyone does understand what we're discussing here today, this is an MOU that allows the sheriff's office to accept a $2 million grant from PetSmart Charities, and the sheriff has, you know, certainly come here and spoke to us about his vision to collect millions of dollars from nonprofit or private sector to fund the construction of this new MASH unit so that these, these costs would not be, we would not be using general fund monies to, to construct this facility. Again, I'll ask again, is there a motion to approve A1?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to approve this item with a comment, if there's a second.
Please.
But I, I want to just say that hearing my colleagues describe this and their concern certainly resonates with me. Much of what we do as a county, as a county board, is, is in some cases, progress, not perfection. And I think in this matter, this is progress. It's not perfect to, to any of us, and is there a lot of work that still yet has to be done? I believe there does, as do my colleagues. So, very seldom, Mr. Chair, do you see us wrangle with an issue such as this, but we do so, I, I think, to make sure that we can have success. It's not, and I think Mr. Gallardo said this in his comments, this isn't about politics. This isn't about pettiness. This is about trying to move this county in this regard with our sheriff and with our jail system to make something better, to have this public-private partnership. I think this is a step in that direction, and I know there's more work to come. But with that, I would make a motion, and would hope there would be a second.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Chukri, for your comments, and of course, thank you to my other colleagues for their comments already, and I, and I echo your, your comments as far as this is, this is, you know, democracy in action, and this is everyone trying to come to the, to the best result for the county, and that's the great thing, is that everyone on this dais has that in mind, and, and what motivates everyone's actions up here, and I love that about, about this, this county and this board. So, I do have a, I do have a motion. Is there a second? All right. Well, at, at this point, I believe this item... All right, well, at this point, I believe this item fails for a lack of a second. So we'll move on to the next item. We will recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I apologize, but if I might break before you convene as the Flood Control District, we have realized that on item number forty-two, we had an error on the slide. It indicated you were going to be having a unanimous roll call vote regarding an IGA with Hela County. However, the agenda is correct. That particular unanimous vote deals with Salt River Project. So I don't want there to be any confusion with those that might be watching if they saw the slide. And so if we might revisit that, I can ask Andrea, should we simply ask to rescind the previous vote and correct the title?
I think that would be good, just to clear the record.
All right, so...
It's item number forty-two.
Okay, so on item forty-two, then, we would need, I would entertain a motion for reconsideration on item forty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration of item number forty-two based on our clerk's comments.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much for the second. All in favor of the motion to reconsider the original motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? All right, the motion for reconsideration passes, so now we go back to the underlying motion. This is item forty-two, so this is again IGA with, to say SRP.
This is a Salt River Project grant of power distribution easement.
Excellent. All right, do I have a motion on the item forty-two?
Make a motion now to approve item number forty-two.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the new and improved?
Except I believe we're going to have to do it by roll call again.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, exactly. Yes, yes, so it does require a roll call, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Chukri?
Aye.
Supervisor Sellers?
Aye.
Supervisor Hickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
And Chairman Gates.
Aye. All right, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for setting us straight there.
I apologize for the error, but I'm glad we caught it while we're still in the meeting.
Absolutely, we're still here, so it worked out great. All right, so now we will recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. We have item F-one, contract with ACOM. F-two, an IGA for improvements to McMickin Dam Outlet Channel Phase One Project. F-three, declare parcels as no longer needed for the purpose conveyed and authorize conveyance to the Arizona State Land Department. And F-four, easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. The Board will now consider items F-one through F-four.
Move for approval, items F-one through F-four, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we'll adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors, and we will consider item L-one, donations.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item L-one.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move to the Stadium District, adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Stadium District Board of Directors to consider S-one, Tobacco-Free Facility Resolution and Policy. Do I have a motion in favor of this item?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item S-one.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Gallardo. Do we have a... Thank you very much, Supervisor Chukri.
I apologize for Mr. Gallardo's delay, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we will adjourn as the Stadium District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, and we will move right into public comment, and we do have one speaker slip today, so we have Martha Thompson with the League of Women Voters of Arizona. And please come join us. Thank you so much for being with us today. We do have a clock up there on the wall, but please take, take as much of that time as you would like, and great to have you here today.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I am Martha Thompson, and this is my friend Susan Penner. We both live in District Four. We are members of the League of Women Voters in Arizona and the U.S. You have seen us attending these formal meetings as part of the League of Women Voters Observer Corps. With each meeting, we have learned about the job that you do in government and the county, and we have grown to appreciate all that you do. I want to talk to you about our election system. You are currently studying ways to improve the system. The League of Women Voters would like to weigh in with an idea whose time has certainly come, all ballot by mail. It is one of our positions on voting in Arizona. The League of Women Voters wants to see the whole state choosing to follow the example of Oregon, Washington, and Colorado, where the system has proven to be highly secure and engages more voters, and while it significantly lowers the cost of collecting those votes. The League knows that this change should be written into the state laws of our, by our elected legislators at the Capitol. It has been tried multiple times. It seems there are quite a few of our legislators who won't say it in so many words, but who do not ever want to see the vote turnout doubled or tripled. We are not naive. We understand their reasoning, but that reasoning is wrong, and this should not be a partisan issue. We believe that every person should vote, and every vote should count. The session, as usual, this session, as usual, they have introduced a Raptor bill that would suppress the vote count, and as usual, the League has vigorously protested them. You gentlemen could end the battle over votes, at least in Maricopa County, which holds more than half of all Arizona voters. You could simply change our system to all ballot by mail. Make the transition by using the presidential preference election in March of 2020 to close down primary polling places and instead rely on the forty vote centers already in place, perhaps opening a few more. Encourage more voters to register for the permanent early voter list. We call it PEVEL.
And then if I can just have you wrap up, you've gone over time.
I wanted to point out successes in Orange County and in Colorado, where many millions of dollars are being saved using this system. So please consider vote by mail or ballot by mail for our county, Maricopa County, and lead the state in this very positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, for joining us. Really appreciate your time and your thoughts. And so that is our only speaker slip we have today, so with that, we will, as our normal time, that we turn it over to the supervisors and the county manager to share any updates they would like to. Let me start with you, Supervisor Chukri. Was there anything you would like to share with us this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just other than, we received some donations that we approved today, and I know that we're always grateful for that, but I want to make sure that we, we convey that to all those generous constituents of ours who help us. It seems like each and every meeting with those donations. And then just two other items. Again, kudos, I think, to Mr. Hickman and our former supervisor for District Four, for their leadership and that, I think, great partnership with the federal government. When you start to see these trails and their true beauty, it makes Maricopa County all the more special, I know, to all of us and to our residents. And then lastly, as we celebrate, celebrate through this proclamation, County Month, I think all of us know how lucky we are to be able to work with each other and especially represent the people that we get to represent in the fastest-growing county. So that is all, and of course, thanks to all of you for accommodating me to call in here from Washington, D.C.
Thank you so much for those remarks, Supervisor Chukri, and again, thanks for, for joining us. Next, we'll turn it over to Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things before I think we meet again, I think in April. Tollisens having their annual Whoopee Days event, they moved it up this year to beginning of April in hopes to get a little cooler weather, but it's always a great event out there in the West Valley. It's well-attended, and we're happy to be part of it and have a table there and promoting the county services, so we're looking forward to that. And then, of course, it's baseball season. We're out there, we have another game tonight. We were successful on Monday, and so hopefully the guys are going to go out there and have a great time, and let's see how things work out. But this is the season, baseball, man. It's exciting, and it's always fun to be out there, and, you know, I tell people it's my therapy, you know? For two hours a day, I just turn off my phone and I don't even think about anything but be out there with the kids and have great parents that are helping us this year. You need volunteers, you need parents that really participate. When I'm not there, the parents take over, and so I'm real grateful for that as well. But great things happening in District Five, and we look forward to the summer coming around.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. It is starting to warm up out there, so it is definitely time for baseball, and thanks for all you do with the kids down there. That's great. Supervisor Hickman?
Well, first off, thank you, Steve, for your comments about the historical, the historical perspective that I think all of us maintain, and Max Wilson, so many great things started under his leadership, so thank you for pointing out his service to the county. It's been, it's been an absolute pleasure to, to kind of keep carrying the ball, or keep, keeping carrying the ball forward. Echoing Steve Gallardo's thoughts, hopefully our baseball teams can play each other. There's no better therapy than being able to scream at your players, so I know that's what you're doing.
I know, the umpire.
Last weekend, I was invited to the Sun City West Posse. They were celebrating their fortieth anniversary of being in service to the community. I want to point out Commander Myron for, for inviting me out there and keeping me apprised of the situation that continues to exist with not being able to roll Posse members into the jobs that they volunteer for. They pay out of their own pockets to, to help protect the citizens of Sun City West, so thank you for, for the invitation to come out and celebrate them. There's currently, I believe, somewhere around thirty or forty out of seventy, so hopefully we can continue to get more and more of them cleared from the Sheriff's Department to, to do the vital service they do for District Four. And last, I really can tell just how hard staff members work in getting to work with all of your chiefs of staff and the jobs that they do, because we're missing one at a District Four. So Scott, I'm sorry, you're doing a fantastic job, but as I continue to walk past the ever-growing list of things that Michelle has waiting for her, I would like to celebrate her and let everyone know that she welcomed in a new office member of District Four. Little baby Carlos was born last week, so thank you to all of you guys for pitching in on, at, on the 10th floor. We've, we've had that on our mind. She's doing great. I know other people will be facing, facing that shortly, so thanks for, for everybody's help and service to District Four up on the 10th floor. It helps out a little bit while she's, while she's taking care of a brand-new baby.
Well, thank you, and congratulations to Michelle. And just to be clear, we do follow the child labor laws here in Maricopa. There to be any question. Joy Rich, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I just want to acknowledge that we had some very sad news here at the county. On March 16th, Roseanne Osborne Perez passed away following a brief illness. She was our first Tom Manos Award recipient. I think that all of us here at the county that knew Roseanne, there was just no one like her. She was completely dedicated to customer service, dedicated to the county, and frankly, lived every day in support of our citizens, but also all of us as county employees. We all, over the years, received words of encouragement from her. I got to go back through my emails of encouragement from her, notes that she had sent me over the years, just a warm hug every time you saw her. Her loss is, I know, leaving a big hole at McDot and throughout the county where she served for decades, but treated every day as if it was her first. She was no less excited her last day that she worked here than her very first, and so there are going to be services. There will be a visitation and rosary on Sunday evening, and then services on Monday morning, and any of you who would like directions or information about those, please contact my office. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we all mourn her loss, and thank you for mentioning that. Joy, Supervisor Sellers?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I had the honor to attend the Eighth Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast this morning in the Town of Gilbert, and it's always so encouraging to see the great diversity that we have in this valley, and bringing all those faiths together in, in one venue is really something that we can be very proud of, and, and I enjoy doing that every year. So congratulations to Mayor Daniels for handling that this year, and, and like I say, I think that's one of the great strengths of our region, that we have that kind of diversity, and we, we find ways to bring them all together to share thoughts at least once a year in that kind of a venue, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for representing Maricopa County there. Again, I just wanted to echo the comments that everyone made to Supervisor Hickman. Congratulations on Vulture Mountain, and, you know, I felt like you should have been the one there signing the documents, but hey, a first and, and an incredible accomplishment, something that will, that will stand the test of time, so very excited about that. I was very fortunate yesterday to have the opportunity to attend the Mental Health Protocols Summit, which was out at the Supreme Court Building, so I was invited to join the presiding judge, and then representatives from the county attorney's office, correctional health, adult probation, and so we had counties all around the state that were represented there, and it was a fantastic session, and experts were brought in from around the country. We all know that mental health is such a big issue as it relates not only to our jails, the court system, but also homelessness, and it's exciting to see that Arizona is really leading on this, and I think that there will be some opportunities as we move later into this year for the county to work with, for the Board, to work with the judicial branch to convene some stakeholders and maybe even some of the other municipalities within Maricopa County to work together to figure out how we can address this vexing issue, which we know is tied up in so many of the challenges we have. So again, thank you to the judicial branch for inviting me to, to go there on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. I'm excited that next Wednesday, I'll be doing the District Three Farm Breakfast, so thank you to the Farm Bureau. We're really excited about that. I'm not sure what we're going to be eating, but, no, I'm kidding. As always, thank you to Hickman's for providing the delicious eggs. This year, we will be again, April 3rd, 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. We'll be over at the AZ Wholesale Growers there. That's on 19th Avenue between Pinnacle Peak and Happy Valley. It's a great spot. Fingers crossed, I need to go on and check out the extended forecast, but fingers, two years ago, it rained on us a little bit, so hopefully we'll, we'll have a great event, invite everybody to join us, great food, and we'll be talking, we'll be getting our ag update, which of course, my wife, growing up on a farm in Iowa, is always happy when I get a little bit of egg update, egg training, and as always, just so grateful to Farm Bureau for doing that. And those are all my comments. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.